Good evening folks, uh. Welcome to this uh special. Uh MTA special meeting reaction video. This is Jason Anthony. From his studios at Barm Hill, Brooklyn. Uh it is eleven oh one P M. Uh we want to thank uh everybody that will be joining us. Um first things first, uh today the MTA had to convene. Into a special meeting thanks to uh Larry Schwartz. And of course, uh. And of course, uh it was convened thanks to um Larry Schwartz. Well, as we start to see the eleven o'clock news. We're gonna be uh watching. Uh channel two for incident. That have uh eleven o'clock newscast. And let's see who starts off the eleven o'clock uh portion. It's at ten o'clock uh Fox five started it off. But who's gonna kick it off at eleven? Who knows? Okay, channel two is starting with the same. Uh headline as Fox five that the train war. Hmm. So you just have to. We will have to keep going from channel to channel to channel. Because it is demonstrated that for the local media. Mass transit, it is not a priority. And for that matter, we are going to go to nothing than less than Twitter. Let's um enable our screen sharing that you guys could see. And first off, we see a a tweet a tweet from Nico Genilas. Genilas saying, people, you are missing the big story. The fix that we spent one million dollars. To enforce Long Island Railroad alcohol ban. Says much about Long Island Railroad law rules. Law power and about propensity of Long Islanders to illegally drink. That's a good one, Matt. Matt, Matt, if you are watching, uh retweet this uh information. And uh we are going to into. Let's say word per word. Let's say. Oh now channel seven and channel four are talking about the plane incident uh this afternoon. But in other words, let's do math. This is a an excerpt from uh. CFO Bob Farren that he did this afternoon during the meeting. Uh full disclosure, I was at, oh.
Now, the MTA says five workers have been disciplined for abusive overtime, and they're investigating other cases too. But some workers say they are consistently asked to work the long hours and they're being unfairly demonized.
Just channel four. Alright, at least channel four. Yes, this is a channel seven.
They begged them to stay overnight. They leave them there because they are qualified on the on the various pieces of equipment. Do you think they always wanna say no?
Overtime on the L I double R is up thirty percent, with some workers making more than the railroad president.
This is not right. You know, someone needs to do something. Someone needs to listen. We need to stop this violence.
Alright, channel seven has did mention channel four as well. We'll wait for channel two. Uh meanwhile, we're gonna continue uh looking at this um. At this picture here. We have uh New York City Transit uh they spent one hundred forty nine million. Part of that was due to the subway action plan. Uh MTA headquarters, MTA police homeless outreach activity, two million dollars. Amtrak Penn Station coverage, one million dollars. Special events coverage, one million dollars. And the Long Island Railroad alcohol ban, one million dollars. The alcohol ban was doing uh during Santa Con. And uh major holidays like Christmas and Thanksgiving. The Long Island Railroad spent twelve million dollars. Due to vacancies and low and lower employee visibility. In the maintenance employment department. Of that twelve, seven was spent on that. Enhanced maintenance and modification activities. In the while away maintenance department in support of Penn Station Amtrak state of good repair effort, five million. And we want to thank uh Nicole Genilas for um. Turning this and we are going to go. To my own Twitter page. This is my Twitter page notifications. All day. I'm saying all day. Even I was mentioned by Jose Martinez. And of course, having so part of those uh transit advocates like Andy Quinto. Uh Matt Camper and these randomness. Uh chromo corruption. And all of that. But. Meanwhile. The press. Lack of coverage. Okay, let's repeat this again. When the press doesn't cover issues. Let's say in the Long Island Railroad. There is someone. That is. And who could it be? Let's do a simple search. And I present to you Matt Camper. Matt, as you know, he is a dedicated. Long Island Railroad commuter. From Merrick, from uh let's say East Meadow. But his home station is uh Merrick. On the along the main line. And as you see. He not only reports when there's uh issues. In the Long Island Railroad like this past few days. For instance, today he covered the issue along the Port Washington branch. The Rockcockmark branch, plus I co- collaborated with him. During the coverage on the Rockcockmark branch uh issue the other day. Uh we have collaborated in the past in uh station tours. We are going to continue to do that. And of course, um. Thanks to him. People from Long Island are getting the information. What commuters deserve. But not every single person. Pays attention. Well, channel two is doing this. Let's take a listen. Look at this, channel two. Investigating why there's no light in the Henry Hudson Parkway grounds. Look at this, eleven eighteen P M and channel two hasn't done any mention whatsoever. Regarding this afternoon meeting, despite the fact that. Political reporter Marsha Kramer was present. Let's look at this uh tweet from Chris Solis. He is saying the MTA board is seriously corrupt. First thing, didn't provide shuttle buses after the incident at Farmingdale at the Rockcockmark. Branch on Wednesday. Second, they are trying to police innocent Long Island Railroad workers. At their job sites. Third, there there's a lack of safety and authority. And we are to respond with this. But let's see Marsha Kramer's tweet. The last thing that she posted regarding transit. Was April twenty fourth at one oh eight P M. And that was when Mayor Warren Woodham Junior. Uh mentioned the the busway. And at April tenth at six forty four P M, she retweeted something from channel two. Of course, her workplace. Something regarding congestion pricing. And of course. We have, and we're gonna do full disclosure. We have the business card by Marsha Kramer. And her phone number is stored in my. In my phone. Uh let's do something here pretty quick. And this could sound crazy. But we are going to do this. We are entering to our iCloud. And. Let's go into contacts. And she will hate me. Oh, apparently. Wait a minute. Okay, if Joel is is writing to me, um. Apparently, her phone number doesn't come out here iCloud. But of course, I have Greg Barker's information here in my in my phone. Let's do a refresh of contacts. Cause apparently. Um. Hmm. Alright, let's let's do another alternative. We are going to look at the text messages from my phone. And. Um. And then we will. Okay, we sent it her a text message, in other words, a iMessage. To her cell phone. That ends with five two two zero. And we sent it her a picture of a homeless person. Sleeping on the South Ferry Bow Wondering. Guess what? She never answered the text. And let's go to Twitter. And of course, um. This is a picture that we took when we were at J Street Metro Tech. This was about two hours after the the incident with the with the conductor. And you guys could observe that uh MTA employee right in front of the. Hmm station booth. Looking uh pounding his cell phone. Right outside of the fair of fair area. Oh, before that. Listen to this. It turns out that Pat Foy has Twitter. But it's private. What is he hiding? Unlike his predecessor, uh Joe Lora ninety nine problems. Uh had his Twitter uh public. But who knows? And of course, I tweeted this out. Uh when when we refer to Super A. We uh mentioned Andy Byford. In other words, we are referring to Andy Byford. And it turns out that he's the person number twenty one who earns the most at the MTA. Who are the other twenty? Who knows? We treated this out to Marsha Kramer at five thirty three. And you guys could see this picture of three individuals. Sleeping right in front of the entrance to Credit Suisse. On Twenty Third Street of the Lexington Avenue Line. But guess what? No response. She covers whatever she feels like. Emmy Award winner. Well, speaking of the Emmy Awards. Look at this. This annual event. This annual event. This annual event. That uh, was held two weeks ago, two weekends ago. In a prestigious hotel in Times Square. Gets a lot of attention. And. We are going to see. The Emmy Awards. The list of the Emmy Awards. See, out of every news outlet. Channel four. One seventeen. Telemundo forty-seven, one fourteen. Six eleven, one nine. News twelve, Westchester, one eight. Univision. One seven. So between Telemundo and Univision. They want half of each other. News twelve, New Orleans, six. Eight uh, Channel seven, one five. Uh, Spectrum, uh, New York, one, one, three. Uh, Fox, one, two. CBS one, only one. And why is that? Their studios. Their own studios. Their own. Studios. And even Andrew Siff won two awards. Two awards. One of them was regarding the graffiti. Oh. Transportation and traffic. This year was Andrew Siff. So at least in terms of. At least for. For transit, Andrew Siff won this year. But that's one part of the equation. The other equation is. The New York Press Club. And the New York Press Association. These. This entity. Reprints since. News reporters. Let's see who are involved in this. Look at this. Ten ten wins money anchor, Bridget Quinn. Is involved in this. Rich Lamb. From W C B S News Radio eight-eight. But. Nothing regarding. A- another organization is the R S C's Press Club. This one. Is more nationwide, including Puerto Rico. But they are not involved. In New York City media. Let's check the New York Press Association. To see who are involved in this. Okay, this is not. What we are looking for apparently. Okay, I think we found the answer. Oopsie, epic fail. Hmm hmm hmm. But let's continue on. Uh, today. We. And of course, uh, moving forward, let's go to the New York Post. And let's go to this. I know that my other contributors. Covered it, but we're gonna cover it as well. No matter where we're all refusing to work. After overtime. Crackdown on the M T A. And let's look at this other article. From. Andrew Martin. Duomo. Nobody. Uses his second name. I'm the only one. That started to call the governor. By his whole name. But look at this sentence. Duomo Apertis won the M T A. Although that he frequently insists. The agency is out of his control. And look at this, the watchdog group also found that one. Long Island River track board named Marco Pasmino. More than quadrupled. His base salary last year taking home. Two hundred fifty-six thousand, one hundred seventy-seven dollars. By walking on a stony one. Stomping one, four thousand. Four hundred fifty-seven hours of overtime alone. That average. For eleven point four hours of overtime. Worked. For each day of the year. And the stunning figures from M T H chairman Pat Foy. To order a crackdown. On overtime at the agency. Last week, including a probe into the past. Twelve months of O T at the All I double R and sending. The agency's cops to monitor workers. Let's. For those people who have short. Memory about Pat Foy. Guess what? We are going to. Bring back some memories. From him being here. We have to find the video. Okay, let's see if. Oh, we found a quote of Pat Foy. During his uh, tenure. During his uh, last tenure. As. Port authority, uh, chair, uh, president. And where is that quote? Look at this quote. This region needs state-of-the-art airports. New mass transit infrastructure. And bridges designed to handle the twenty-first century traffic. Levels. If we are going to grow projections. And the ten-year capital plan provides a record level of investment. In all these areas that meet and support the region's growth. And serve as a major jobs creator for the next decade. Oh, well. Too bad. And now we have to go back. Into twenty seventeen. Early twenty seventeen, that is. Okay, let, let's do this, let's. Let's search, uh, twenty seventeen. Twenty twenty-six. Capital plan. Video. Of plan meeting. Hearings. Oh, epic fail is twenty twenty six capital plan uh hearings. Capital plan. Okay, that's the document. That's telling. Okay, we're trying to find. That meaning. That Omar Vera and I were present. Let's see if we find the videos. Oops. Let's see if we find videos. Yes, let's see this one.
They are requesting who would authorize the planning effort. To support the project to extend the path system to a new intermodal station. Newark's South Ward and adjacent to the Newark Airport rail link station. At an estimated amount of planning cost of fifty seven million dollars. The project will greatly improve commuter transit access to Newark, Jersey City, and New York City. As well as increase transit options to Newark Airport. The project will include approximately two point four miles of trackway. Train storage yard, an intermodal station, as well as twenty two additional railroads. Specifically, this item authorizes professional services with both firms known as HNTB and AKRF and their associated subconsultants. This resolution will enable us to complete the EIS process and receive a record decision. I offer this resolution to your consideration, Commissioner. Thank you.
Oops, give me one second, folks.
On the viability of path extension uh Newark Airport. And uh my own understanding, having looked at the numbers myself, is that there is no need for this. And there is no passenger demand from airport passengers for this extension for two billion dollars. Uh, the same goes for the LaGuardia Airport extension, so I'm not pleased, but there's no ridership demand. So until I see a ridership study that shows demands for this four billion dollar expenditure. I don't see any reason to vote for a fifty seven million dollar expenditure. That is part and parcel of the overall path extension to Newark. So I will have to vote no on this.
Commissioner, if I could just add that we will be providing that uh analysis as part of this authorization. And you're exactly correct that it ties into Newark Airport and that's a large part of it. But also it's a vital artery providing for Newark South Ward. To places such as Jersey City, other portions of New Jersey, as well as Lower Manhattan. And also the component anticipating that Union, Morris, and Somerset Counties will be positively impacted by this. And what will happen is it'll help to reduce the strain on the Northeast Corridor. Newark Penn Station and some of our bridges and tunnels that it wrote has been unprecedented. But we do, the bottom line is we do owe you their report and that's included in the cost of this study. Commissioner Bagger.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think looking at this chart that's on this slide is actually very helpful uh to us because it shows the three benefits of this project. This project is something that the Port Authority uh second, especially the approximately two years to do the. Two years to get an additional, you're authorizing the total, but an additional forty nine. Dollars.
Seventeen is part of complexity and building as opposed to building tunnels, actually being able to.
Five hundred thousand dollars, whatever it takes to do a proper ridership study. As to whether this demand by airport passengers for path extension to two billion dollars. And then.
Just showing the levels of ridership that are forecasting, including from the commutation uh expansion and. A you know, potential fiscal model for the transit oriented development, but it could be very helpful to circulate that.
At this point, it'd be appropriate to have a motion from a committee member, not the accused, move the idea forward. Yeah, wrong. Okay, uh, so uh with the motion made and seconded, uh I know the commissioner of the press has opposed, but other than commissioner Lippers, are there any opposition to moving it forward before the. Right, uh, the motion would then move forward to the to the listener's consideration. Uh, next presentation is by Cedric Forten in the GWV, main span upper level structural steel issue. Cedric.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Oh, a familiar former, the former Bridges and Tunnels. Uh President at the MTA was also at the port unauthorized.
Today I am requesting authorization for the project, the second phase main span up last rehabilitated in nineteen eighty. Project completion is targeted for four weeks. That was previously wanted system to avoid clinical equipment that currently we have a. Turn into Hoboken.
Let's see if they mentioned something.
As well for every unit, every one of your sixes, every section.
Regarding air train LaGuardia.
As you can see from these two pie charts, uh, the pie chart on.
Hmm, let's do, let's do even something, something better. Let's look for air train LaGuardia. That could give us a better idea. Let's see if we find what we want. Unless if we do a Google search. Hmm, let's do a Google search. Uh. P I N Y N J. O Y N J. Twenty seventeen. Twenty twenty six capital now. Video. Bingo.
I am Stephanie Dawson, Chief Operating Officer for the Port Authority of New York, New Jersey. I will be conducting tonight's public meeting on the Port Authority's proposed twenty seventeen, twenty twenty six capital plan. With me and to my right are two members of our Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Jeffrey Linford and Commissioner William Pat Schuber.
Oh, that was not it, is the first one.
We are going to get started, so please don't take a seat. Hi, I'm Stephanie Dawson and I'm the Chief Operating Officer for the Port Authority of New York, New Jersey. I will be conducting tonight's public meeting on the Port Authority's proposed twenty seventeen to twenty twenty six capital plan. With me are three of our Board of Commissioners, to my right Chairman John Degman. Commissioner William Pat Schuber and Commissioner Kenneth Lippert. Also with me to my left are Patrick Foyt, Executive Director of the Port Authority. And Elizabeth McCarthy, the Authority's Chief Financial Officer. The purpose of this meeting is to pro- provide you, the public, with an opportunity to express your thoughts and opinions. Regarding the proposed ten year capital plan. Our Board of Commissioners voted on January fifth of this year to introduce this proposed plan. And publish it on the Port Authority website. So that the public will be able to review the plan, evaluate it, and provide comments. The board was carefully reviewed all of the input before taking action on the plan at its February sixteenth meeting. We are here to listen. We will not engage in a dialogue, nor will there be any question and answer opportunities here tonight. The proposed plan in its entirety has been available on our website for several weeks. And can still be accessed in the corporate information section of our website. Printed materials are available at the table in the back of this room. There are also several presentation boards that explain highlights of the plan that you may view. In one of the meeting rooms in the rear corridor. To speak at tonight's meeting, you need to have registered. Either in advance via the website or onsite tonight at the table outside in the main corridor as you can. I will call the names of registered speakers. When I call your name, please come to the podium, state your name and affiliation if any, for the record. Comments at tonight's meeting are limited to three minutes per speaker. You will notice a digital clock across the room. Once you begin your comment, the clock will count down from three minutes. Please be considerate and conclude your comments within three minutes. If you have more extensive comments, we encourage you to provide them in writing to our email address at publiccomments@panyj.org. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live via the Court Authority website. A court reporter is recording the proceedings. Summary of the comments here tonight, along with the written comments we are receiving via email and social media, will be provided to all our board members in advance of their deliberation on the final ten-year Capitol Plan. This meeting is scheduled to run until eight P M. Speakers may register until seven point five P M. If all those wishing to speak have done so before eight P M, we will go into recess until either eight P M or when another speaker registers. If there are speakers who have registered and have not yet spoken at eight P M, we will continue the meeting until all registered speakers have been heard. Thank you again for taking the time to attend this meeting. We appreciate your participation. With that, I will call the first speaker. Please note that speakers will be called in groups of three. And I will speak and will speak in the order that they are called. So the first three names are Christine Bertet, Murray Bowden, and Ivan Garrett.
Even Murray Bowden showed up to that meeting.
Ms. Bertet? Okay, then we'll start with Murray Bowden.
Well, he was the first one.
My name is Murray Bowden. I represent concerned grandparents. That's what kind of environment do we need for our grandchildren? That's what I'm concerned about. The report that you had written left out a couple of very important facts. One, the people in New Jersey did not know that the Seventh Avenue subway could be quickly and cheaply extended to Secaucus. And the people in Secaucus could take a bus to Secaucus and come right on a seventh line because it already goes to Thirty Fourth Street. And they were already fast tracking the Gateway Tunnel, which is the old tunnel years ago. The other thing they didn't know, or didn't address, was how are you going to get all those buses through the tunnel? Four times. We're talking about pollution and getting rid of small cars. Well, buses are big cars. Trains don't have the pollution that buses do. Nor do you have that line that I see every day, time I go down to a turnpike meeting. Buses lined up, can't get through the tunnel. It would be cheaper to have the people in New Jersey, get on the Seventh Avenue subway in New Jersey. But that information wasn't provided by your reports. I talked to Bob Gordon, who's a senator from New Jersey. Right? He's sitting here. Two months ago, he didn't know. And if he's the senator and he doesn't know, that means the report you did wasn't done accurately. Most money, I suggested that he step down. I still think that somebody else needs to lead the Board Authority because I don't know why you don't get it. If you don't get the new world we live in, this is not the world of my grandparents. Not my world. It's the world of my granddaughter, my grandchildren. Let's leave a better place for them. Social media gets the word out. I like that clock. I draw a clock just like that that Greenberg Town Board many years ago because people didn't know how to go. That clock's better than that little thing that we have over here. Now I can see. I had cataract surgery and I don't wear glasses anymore. A lot of people lose their arm, they still can feel a phantom fingers. I can't get used to it, different world. Thank you all for being here and this is a new world. Enjoy it. Thank you.
Christine Bertet?
Your Board of Directors, Board of Commissioners. I'm, my name is Christine Bertet. I represent Check That, Coalition for Pedestrian Safety on the website. Very concerned about the way, the intensity of this process and the different messages coming back and forth. I'm not going to comment on the numbers or.
I want to speak about a very critical alternative, the Empire State.
To be taking full advantage of you and of programs that you're, that you're proposing.
Okay, there's Omar.
We are on Houston.
Good afternoon, MTA Board of Commissioners and prestigious guests. My name is Lee, our patient CEO of Black Windstorm Technology, the first aerospace side of the fifth telecommunications company ever designed to create a shield of protection for New York City and citizens by utilizing state of the art double encryption process over the integrated network that will provide real-time detection and coordination capabilities. Our vision of safe city began in early two thousand while working in the world of defense.
And remember, this meeting was held, uh, January thirty-first, twenty seventeen.
Our scope of business was developing a plan designed around starting events that devastated New York City, whether it was domestic or international, and to meet a deterrent mechanism that can identify local activity. So that end, B R T began a progressive campaign, campaigns for reaching out to NASA, many, many public private agencies, authorities, so we could work in partnerships and follow our strategy, maintain maximum compliance at all levels. B R T is proud to announce the new relationship with New York City, MTA, and Second National D O B, Homeland Security, and White House, the New York Public Service Ministry. Our first priority was to create the means to manufacture satellite NASA facial recognition communication package that would be secure, reliable, and real-time so that all personnel have sustained secure connectivity above and below the ground. We did this. Our second priority was to add detection hardware component infrastructure within the subway for New York City that can alert authorities when sensors identify explosive nuclear bomb actives. We did this. Our third priority was to reach out to local government of the five boroughs and announce our intentional status and innocent jobs programs to train and augment our workforce. We did this. Our fourth priority was to secure contract agreements with various public and commercial potential giants to sell various patented hardware components on open market. We did this. Our fifth priority was to announce awareness of our capabilities to foreign nature European governments that continue to acquire contracts with B R T partners. And lastly, our sixth priority is to ensure that the funds awarded are placed in a reset format that was built and well accelerated that would create the necessary operating capital to fund many programs we intend to engage. By detecting these threats, B R T's goal will never be closed and never be in common. We also implement quality control measures to ensure that accountability practices are followed. During this presentation, I frequently reference the word partner or partnership. It's important to know that every hand and shape and every contract I've signed, that will be completely transparent. B R T's letter, we believe that it must bring value to the table to ensure mutually beneficial opportunities for all. Our plan is any contract that is awarded to B R T from a foreign government will be done in collaboration with our partners. Thank you.
The next three speakers, Brown, Mitchell, David Ballack, Omar Zero. Brown, Mitchell?
Oh, I go after Omar.
David Ballack?
Thanks for having us here tonight. My name is Dave Ballack. I've been working at Bicycle Habitat in Soho, which is a longstanding and beyond bicycle shop for the last seven years. I'm here to talk about the George Washington Bridge bicycle access on the bridge. In case you weren't aware, outdoor retail in the cycling industry have had a pretty rough couple of years of late, especially in New York. This past year has seen more than a handful of local bike shops close their doors in the city. Its sales continue to slump despite warming weather. Last thing, the few crucial businesses needed to reduce access, bike group adding literal roadblocks to their customer base. New York and New Jersey have some of the country's best and highest traveled bikers from over the city. On a busy Saturday morning in the summer, cyclists account for about half the traffic on nine W North Manhattan. And most of those riders get there by crossing the George Washington Bridge. Proversing the less than seven foot wide crowded path during peak usage can be a harrowing and dangerous experience. Between the improved approaches for the bridge and the upcoming opening of the Tethys Bridge to the first cyclists, a number of riders and pedestrians who need Hudson River crossings deploys to the limit. The overcrowded bridge is a problem that's not going to go away. Leaving the George Washington Bridge paths at their current width through the retabling process as part of the Capitol Plan will not only perpetuate the current problem, but will greatly exacerbate the future one. Crowding on the span will force cyclists to walk, will render the bridge mostly impassable for most of its regular users. Hoisting it a mile in rigid, heated cycling shoes is at best unbearable and at worst dangerous. Widening the path is part of the retabling included in the Capitol Plan with future proof of the bridge to inevitable increased usage. This is likely the last opportunity we'll have in a very long time to make these changes. It would be a shame to leave future generations of cyclists with bridge access that was already inadequate before they ever even. Don't put off New York cyclists from their rides. Don't cut the bottom out of bike shafts customer base. Please do not miss the opportunity to widen the George Washington Bridge bicycle path as part of the Capitol. Thank you.
Omar Zero?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Omar, I'm a private citizen. But I'm, I'm a transit advocate. I attend many MTA board meetings. This is the first time I've attended the Court Authority publicly. But I'm here to discuss a couple of things. Before I get to the poster, what I'm going to say is that I support most of the programs that you're, that you're proposing here as part of the Capitol Program. Especially extending the paths to Newark Airport. That's definitely needed. They need more access to the airport. But I would recommend that when you do that, that you should extend the Thirty Third Street Journal Square Line all the way to the airport, or at least the Pennsylvania Station in New York. I also agree with rehabilitating the Air Train Newark because it looks so antiquated. It needs to look at least more like Air Train JFK. And while I also agree with like, like renewing the Guardia Airport, JFK Airport, I, I, now we get to the poster, I believe in opposition to that because it would do little to alleviate seven train traffic against the A. And it would do little to help the people trying to get rich in the Guardia Airport. The border in like JFK and Newark are mostly domestic airport flights, keep them Canada, as long as the national flight. And thus, there's much closer to Manhattan. I think instead you should let the MTA extend the story line, the N W train to, to the Guardia Airport. When I recommended W serve the Guardia Marina Terminal, while the air train served all of the Guardia Terminals. Like, talk with the MTA and I recommend you drop the air train to Guardia Plan in favor of just letting the MTA. So you can still develop at the Guardia Airport, just don't build their train. Simply extend, simply let the MTA extend those historic lines. So at least passengers, Guardia passengers, direct access to the subway. Thanks. And one more thing I'd like to mention that the Hudson River should not be a mountain. It should not be like a a a J-Rec or like a crowd street. Well, like imagine while the separate New York and New Jersey, which is why I recommend to lower the fare back to six dollars on during crossings. Like they used to be back in two thousand and six before like the price was eight dollars in the late. And then like twelve dollars, I think ten and now fifteen dollars. Nobody's gonna pay, but it's a guy so expensive and. I have plenty of family members in Jersey. I I like to visit them and they like to visit me. I think it's not fair to them. And so other people who use the crossings to pay extra for for simple ride across the Hudson River. The Hudson River should not be a project. We should be building bridges, connections, not walls. And last but not least, I suggest that the um, Hudson, uh, Lincoln Tunnel and the Hong Tunnel be um, be uh, modified so that pedestrians could walk down to Jersey. So I have to walk along the George Washington Bridge. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Jason Anthony Camero, Donald James, Scott Benson.
Here I go.
Good evening, public authorities, board members. My name is Jason Anthony Camero. I'm a transit advocate for the area's program. I'm in full support of every project that's presented in the program except for Air Train LaGuardia Airport. Because it doesn't, that, it's the only, New York is the only city that doesn't have their own subway connected to the airport. Instead of that having the MTA provide that access, we have to use an independent agency like the Board of Service that in the airport, like in uh, the F K, the information map also outdated that goes back all the way to two thousand and four. It is a disgrace. Those maps need updated urgently. And regarding the four thirty fourth term, that we have a decision is way overdue. It had to be done a long time ago. And regarding the path extension to more already airport is needed. So I'm in support of it. And please consider extending the thirty third street line to North Penn Station to provide more access for people that go between Long Manhattan and downtown Newark. And please consider alternative of Air Train LaGuardia. Don't, don't you guys think that it's more logical connecting two airports like JFK and LaGuardia using an air train instead of using the air train to the subway and then a bus to go towards the LaGuardia? It makes more sense having an air train route go from JFK to LaGuardia Airport. So that's all I have to say. Have a good day.
There we have it. History in the main game. Pat Boy was present in that January thirty first, twenty seventeen capital plan. And under his tender, Air Train LaGuardia came more of reality. And when uh, Governor Adubar Cuomo named him to run the MTA, now is a complete disaster. I prefer having Andy Byford. Oh, and this is the front page of tomorrow's Newsday. A L I double R over O T crackdown. MTA Chairman, five employees faced discipline for abuse. Unions pushed back against allegations. And who wrote that article? Nothing than less than uh, Newsday's uh, London uh, transit reporter, Alfonso Castillo. But let's conclude this live stream with a single message. And that is mass transit is a priority. But let's look. If you guys think that the local media in English ignores this issue, in Spanish is way worse. Look at the headlines. A plastic surgeon accused of killing a Dominican mother. Drug killing in Mexico. This weekend's weather. The rescue of a green turtle. A bus accident in Brooklyn. Argentina. Bees affecting church high. Explosion in Bogota. Nothing. Nothing. Let's see Univision forty one. Immigration. Well, happy to the mother, Dominican Republic. Trump. Cardi B. The only thing that they mentioned briefly was the crash in Farmingdale. That's the only thing. So Telemundo and Univision are failing to the Spanish community. So to conclude this long livestream, we're gonna say this. The local press has a way to do catch up. Instead of covering what's going on in uh, sixteen hundred Pennsylvania Avenue in Washington, why not focus on more important things? Like mass transit. Reporting incidents. And we are seeing that the MTA is not only the only agency that has issues. Look at the Washington Metro. And we roll Washington Metro last month. Good. We're gonna read the first line. The Washington Metropolitan Area Transit Authority is immune from whistleblower Jamid Williams' false claims to a continuing of a popular handling federal funds under a five billion capital improvement project of federal court roll. Well, so it turns out that New York City is not the only place that has issues. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this in two languages, in English and Spanish. For those reporters on channels one, two, four, five, seven, and channel eleven. Please put mass transit as a priority. Please. Because it's very important. Inform what is going on in terms of mass trans. Anything from a twelve nine situation. Creating awareness of home, the homeless situation in the subway in in uh, Long Island. Me being, being more transit oriented. Use the system. Experience what average daily commuters face. Like Matt Camper, others, and myself included. Now we're gonna go straight. W C D S News Radio eight eighty, W R W N Y C ten ten winds. Please do the same thing as your TV folks. You guys have a homework to do. Now to Spanish.
Ustedes tienen lo que se llama reporteros de asignación general. Pero siempre dejando afuera lo que viene siendo el transporte público. Ambos Telemundo y Univision se perdieron una gran oportunidad de cubrir un tema controversial dentro de la MTA. Y ya está bueno de recibir likes o mandando, mandándome besitos por Twitter. Yo quiero ver un compromiso de ambos canales. Para que obliguen a crear un puesto de reportero de transit o reportero de transportación. Porque en el caso de Telemundo, ellos siempre dependen del ma, del material de News for New York y de And Joseph. Pero ellos no cubren todo. Y con esa en mente, les quiero informar que voy a estudiar periodismo con especialización en transporte público. Now in English. I'm going to announce right now that's almost one A M. That we are going to pursue studies in journalism and specializing in transit. And I will be becoming the first bilingual transit reporter not only who writes mass transit, but who experience all of the things that were mentioned previously. So I want to thank, I want to thank several people. Because without them, this will be impossible. Uh, first, I want to thank again uh, Matt Camper, Andy Quinto, Andy Random Miss Cuomo Quoche in Twitter, especially Passengers United, uh, Joel Guerrero, Alexander Rivera, and Omar Vera. All of us as a team reporting what others don't report. And this is just the beginning of tackling what others don't do. So I want to thank everybody for watching this long, long video. I hope that you guys could learn about this. And if I offended, if you feel offended by by this video, I don't have nothing to say.
I don't have nothing to say because it's very clear you are ignoring me. Me estás ignorando. And thank you very much for watching. Gracias por ver el video. Hasta la próxima. Thank you for watching. See you next time.